And first item is to adopt the agenda, can we get a motion for that? Officer Gilroy makes the motion to adopt the agenda as is. Alright, all those in favor? Terry? Thank you, and then we get to move on to our scheduled delegations and we have the golf club.
Welcome you to come on up and share.
Turn that button on that speaker there, right, pull it down.
There's a little hint right there, isn't it? Alright, well, I'll just turn it over to you guys, you're gonna give us an update, I see, on, and we've got something in front of us now.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for meeting with us tonight. I'm gonna start close to the bottom, because I don't know what I was thinking. We want to let you know how things have been going at the golf course over the course of the last couple of years, since the last time we met with everyone. And some of the things that we've done and some of the things that we have on our to-do list. So recently, we've upgraded the hot water tank to an on-demand hot water system that not only supplies water to the kitchen and the washrooms, but also supplies water to our in-floor heating. We had to buy a new fuel tank for the golf machinery and golf carts. We replaced the kitchen stove, the grill, and the fire suppression system. The health inspector, the last time he was in, said that they wouldn't pass another year, so last winter, we upgraded everything to come up to code. We also built a new deck, which I'm sure everybody has noticed.
I've seen that, it's wonderful.
It sticks right out there. And we purchased a new mower for the golf course a couple of years ago. We have some immediate needs and a three-year plan of needs. The furnace in the building is old and is pretty much done, so we need a new furnace, and we would like one with AC capability, so down the road, we could upgrade and have air conditioning, especially in the lounge for the customers. We need a new septic system, and this is like really an immediate need. The old system is not keeping up with the building, it's thirty-some years old, it's done. And we need new dishwasher in the kitchen, which is a small ticket item compared to the first two. Within three years, the electrical will need to be upgraded, because right now, it's pretty much maxed out. We can't add anything to the building the way it sits now. The power carts are pretty much at the end of their lifespan, they're a dozen or more years old. We need six new bridges eventually. All the wooden bridges need to go, they're too narrow for the machinery, and wood deteriorates, and we're spending more money fixing them than it's worth right now. And we're going to need a new green mower in the future. At this point, we, our only source of funds for all these upgrades, being that we're a nonprofit and don't accumulate funds, are our casinos that we get roughly every three years. Our last one was in March of 2017, we got roughly $33,000. We still have that money, so we can, you know, apply for some grants for matching to do some of our immediate needs. But our next casino isn't until March of 2020, and that doesn't help us with our three-year plan. We have a loan, as you know, we come every year for the letter of comfort to... We have three payments left, three years left of $15,000. We've never missed a payment, we've never been late. But with that commitment, we can't take on another one until that three-year term is met. We received a letter from council back in October, I think, or maybe early November, about a back tax issue. We have no funds to pay these back taxes. I attached a financial statement to the package that I gave you. We were about $8,500 in the hole at the end of last year. So that tax bill, I, I don't know. We've budgeted for the 2018 taxes. But 2017, going back to 2013, we can't. Over the course of the last three years, the executive, we've cut as many costs as we could, and still tried to maintain a high level of service and, of course, playability for our customers. So we can't really save any more money than we've already done. We also have an issue of an aging demographic of golfers. We've noticed over the course of the last few years that, you know, our golf memberships are shrinking. We have virtually no junior golfers, and we're working to address that. We're gonna approach some of the schools and try and get a junior program going to, you know, bring up our numbers, but that's not gonna happen overnight. The county has been a huge supporter of the golf course. They have, they gave us a large chunk of money towards the deck, towards our irrigation pond that we built a few years ago, and towards an irrigation pump, just to name a few of the things that they've helped us with. It's, we're very grateful for what we've received, but we do need more help over the course of the next three years to maintain the level of service and playability that the people of High Prairie area have come to expect. We can't do it on our own, and we'd really like for the town to come up with some ideas to help us, so that we don't lose this really wonderful recreational facility that we all enjoy.
Alright. I'm just going, I just wanted to, if I can ask a question now, or you?
Yeah.
I'm just curious about the back taxes.
I can answer that one. What happened is that, for some strange reason, every year, the golf course is exempt for 90% of all the taxes. But 10% is taxable by law because of the commercial enterprise that sells alcohol. And so the assessor has to put that as taxable. It was supposed to have been billed to the golf course every year, and I know it was in the past. Somehow or another, when I got here last year, I noticed that it had not been done the last three or four years, which is why I figured, okay, well, it needs to get done, and so I invoiced you. I don't know about when you can pay it back, you know, you can pay it back over time or whatever else, but it does need to get paid, and it cannot be exempted because it's a commercial part of the tax base. And so that legislation does not allow us to exempt anybody for commercial stuff. The other 90% for the golf course is exempt already, there are no taxes, it's a zero.
Well, we don't expect not to pay taxes, and like I said, we have budgeted. We did our budget here recently, and we've budgeted for the taxes for this year and going forward. But we don't, we don't have any funds, like, I don't know when we could pay that bill. There's, there's no money there.
How much is the back taxes?
It is, I've got the bill here, it's $6,500.
And that's for five years?
No, for four.
That's for four years, that doesn't include 2017.
But like I said, it's, because it's the commercial part of where they sell the alcohol, it should have been actually passed on to whoever was leasing that part of the lounge, and they should have been the ones paying it. But the golf course itself is exempt.
You know, the taxes are to the town?
It's to the golf course, because the golf course is leasing and has that part of the building that sells the alcohol. The town does not sell the alcohol, the golf course does. The assessors, I spoke to the assessor at length about this, because I knew that there would be an issue, and because it's commercial, there's no way we can exempt that part of it.
I'm still confused. Why are, why are the taxes to the town when it's... I'm confused.
The county owns the land and invoices the town. But the town is supposed, the way the agreement was written up, many years ago, we are supposed to invoice them for the assessed portion, and the assessed portion is the part that's commercial, that sells the alcohol. And that's where the thing is, it's alcohol, it's commercial, it can't go under any exempt category, it cannot go and get, it's just like any other commercial business in town. So council may want to make arrangements that they pay it over time, but we cannot exempt it, it's illegal for us to do so.
So Terry, was this an accounting error that we made?
It was done in the past, it was invoiced every year, and then, when one of my predecessors came about, it stopped. I don't know why it stopped, I did all the research I could, I dug everywhere, I looked at emails, I talked to a few people to find out if anybody had any history as to why it stopped. I have no idea why it stopped, and I believe it was 2012, 2012 or 2013. But it stopped, and it should have been invoiced every, every year.
Well, we can, we'll have to look at what we can do, you know, around that and stuff, and had a bigger discussion, but while we have the golf club here, is there any other questions for them?
You're looking for help from the town, or looking for suggestions? Are, do you have, like, what are you looking for from the town?
We could take out another loan to pay for some of these improvements and use that as matching funds for grants. The thing is, we can't make that kind of a commitment for three years, because we still have three years left on the last one. And we don't have three years to wait on some of this stuff, like the septic system and, and what have you. So we're, we're open to suggestions, if there's any, any way that the town can help us to move forward with some of these projects.
Because with you guys being the actual land, or title owners of this property, we're starting to fall into liability issues with bridges, from public traffic on that. A lot of the pilings are starting to, they're thirty, forty, twenty-five... This year will be our 49th year that the golf club has been out there. There was a redesign of the course, I think it was back in the eighties, when they went from sand greens to, or actual greens that we have now. There was so many capital upgrades to the course. As you've seen, as you can see in front of you, some of the equipment that we have. This stuff is all owned by you guys, the town. Like, we are, we are just a nonprofit volunteer executive board. When you get an assessment, assessor come in and assess the building, he starts to look at the structure. We paid for shingling on that place, out of our own budgets. You know, this is a public facility that's used by the public. We've actually come up with costs, as you can see, that we paid for the new range, the new fire, or, or fire suppression for this stuff. A lot of our own monies that we've raised, whether it be through raffles, casinos and such, as you can see, but we only get thirty-some thousand every three years. So basically, what we can do, what can you do with $30,000 nowadays? We have to try to apply for matching grants. And then to try and, you know, double or triple your money, sort of thing, like the big dugout that we have got done two years ago was an actual blessing towards the course, so that we can actually apply for more grant, fund-wise, so that we can do some of these capital projects. But it's getting to the point where memberships are dwelling, you know, we were in a recession. The funds just aren't there. Basically, we're asking, like, over the last, I've been on the board now, I think this is my ninth year, and I believe it's seven years in a row, or seven out of the nine. The M.D. has stepped up with community hall grant. It's a $5,000 grant that they just, we apply for. A bunch of recreation, tourists, they all apply, and somehow, we get it. $5,000 doesn't seem much, but to us, you know, it can be... Our grounds crew, we cut our grounds crew, we're down to like two or three staff. Wages are down like a third across the board, whether it be in the pro shop, like on our contracts, through the pro shop, the grounds crew. The town now has started sucking out our septic system, as you guys know. It's just, it's failing. We're starting to get more and more, you know, as stuff ages, right? Everything has an end-of-life usage, whether it be the furnaces, you know, that goes, we're hooked. You know, we're looking at electrical upgrades, back in nineteen, I think it was eighty-six, when that clubhouse was built, they've got 208 single-phase power there. Why they did that, we've got three phases into the property, we never went three phases into the building. We can't upgrade it, we're maxed out. You know, all these things we have, went to ACCO, we did actually have, I think it was three or four years ago, pulled for them to do an upgrade on our, just our power system, with $75,000 back then. Well, when you're a nonprofit organization, you know, $75,000, where are you gonna come up with that? You know, and it's kind of trying to prioritize what our needs are, and as you can see in that list, so...
It's good, and, and we've been doing a little bit of sort of the in-kind stuff to help out with that, and that's something that...
And that's appreciated with what the town, the public's work department come out, you know, they help with the, some of the stuff. You know, it was, for two or three years there, we had a tack come out there and do it, and every time they do it, it was three hundred bucks, four hundred bucks. Doesn't sound like much, but, you know, at the year, as Brian, you've seen our financials that we send to you guys every year-end, you know, like, it all adds up, right?
So I, I'm just curious, your immediate needs, that's our things that you want to do this year? With your...
Well, that's our, right now, like, those furnaces are 1986. You know how inefficient those are, Brian, you know, like, it's, they're pretty much on their last legs.
What is the price tag on these three immediate needs?
The new septic system, I believe, what was Mike Jones saying, around fifteen? Don't have an actual quote, but he had actually came and had a look, so, you know, these are things that we need to get on some paper for some documents, so that we can present it to you. Those furnaces, I'd be guessing, they'd be ballparking ten to twelve, probably, because there's two furnaces out there.
And the dishwasher's about five.
Four to five, it's an industrial dishwasher.
So all, and these are, you know, I, I understand high priorities, but you're looking at, I'm gonna say roughly, you know, $30,000 in the ballpark of that. And you've got thirty-three for, you know, so you can get by, plus you can get grants to double that, so you should be alright for the year, right? Does that seem reasonable, or is that...
Which grants would we apply for to even try to get these, is what we're trying to see.
Oh, yeah, that's the, maybe she's the grant person, she might be able to help with that, I, I...
Because I know there was a grant with the town that we had submitted for, the town, sorry?
Because the CFA takes more or less two years to get.
One thing I can suggest, and I can also probably help, if somebody came into the office and talked to me, not next week, because I mean, the auditors are here, but the week after. There are some grants available to nonprofits that I have access to. Also, if you want to go talk immediately to MJ at the county. The county has put her into a position now for the grants, but she also helps all nonprofits to look for grants and apply for grants, and she may be... Yes, because she's usually really good for that sort of stuff.
Most of our grants that we can apply for, like, for matching and whatever, is, it's just both the CFA and the CFIT. That's both the only things that we qualify for, for...
Okay, that she knows about, okay.
Just how our nonprofit is set up.
Okay.
Who we cater to, it's not an ethnic...
Because there are some, yeah, but there are quite a few grants available through the banks and through the different huge oil companies and different things. So if somebody wants to come and talk to me next week, like, the week after, that'd be great.
Go ahead, Brian. I'm probably going to express my ignorance here, but it won't be the first time. The, when it comes to use of the facility, is it member-only, is it public, and if so, how do you advertise it? As well, when it comes to the junior program you're looking at, have you considered all the golf clubs that Sports Central has given us to use for programs such as this?
It's a public facility, there's, we sell memberships. But anybody can come and golf, they pay their green fees and they go. There's, you know, juniors obviously pay less, and one thing we've looked at doing this year to try and increase our junior numbers is golfers up to the age of fifteen will golf for free this year. And from sixteen to eighteen, will golf at a reduced rate compared to normal. Just to try and encourage, and, and this is one of the things we're gonna take to the schools. Maybe that will encourage them to bring their kids out a little bit more, if they don't have to pay the green fees. It makes it easier for them, we're hoping.
One of the purposes of Sports Central, when they brought their equipment up here, was to help people who could not normally afford to be in sports, to be in sports. So they did send quite a few sets of golf clubs up here, that could be used for a junior program, so that if you don't have clubs, you can come, borrow them from the clubhouse, and use them. The other thing is, when it comes to the public use of it, is there any way that we could help you in advertising it a bit more? Because, to be honest, I've been here five years now, and I didn't know anything about your membership fees or some of these other things. And so there's probably a lot of new people who may not know this, so I'm just wondering if there's other ways that we can help you by advertising more, so you can have larger numbers, since you're talking about dwindling numbers.
I believe that we posted in the newspaper our actual seasonal rates and stuff like that, plus on Facebook.
Do you have it at the...
I'm sorry, do you have it at our tourism office? For example, at the museum?
I'm not sure if it's at the tourism office, but I know last year, they were putting it on the sign-out frontier of the building.
Okay, I was thinking tourism office, I was thinking in the, in the hotels, stuff like that, where, you know, something like that.
We've actually advertised out at the Lake Shaw's Point, Hilliers Bay Estates as well. Like, we used to run during the summer months, we'd have is basically a dollar a hole. So you would get, you know, some of the people that do come out camping and fishing, do enjoy golfing, so you would get more traffic on the course, yeah. Well, I guess, you know, once you have some, some numbers on there, and sort of what help you could use, and talk with our people about some of the grants, and then maybe we can talk some more about specifics, because it is a fabulous facility, and, you know, the one suggestion I would have is get rid of all of the water and the bridges, and then I wouldn't lose all my golf balls out there. You know, that's something to think about, make it easier for us hackers out there. Yeah, or that, yeah, I gotta, gotta get some lessons.
Do you have an idea of what cost is on the bridges?
We had a couple quotes two years ago, and the, most of the bridges, there's six of them, five of them would have been in the fifteen to $20,000 range. Because what we're looking at is an all-metal construction with the grate, rather than any wood on it. And they're, be about one and a half times as wide as they are now to allow for the equipment to cross them. There's one bridge on hole number five that runs from the green to the tee box on hole number six, that was almost double, because of the length of the bridge and the fact that it's on fairly shaky ground, it needed pilings and extra stuff, so... That would be...
That's probably the worst one, right?
Yeah, and that would be the one that would probably need to be done first. And it was, yeah, it was over 35,000 or 36,000 was the quote we got for it, and the rest were like 15 to 18, so...
Okay, well, we're supposed to limit all of our delegations to fifteen, and we've gone over, but it was very good, and, and thank you for coming in, and we'll, we'll chat some more, and once you guys get some numbers, and we can go from there.
Thank you very much.
Alright, and now we have MMSA.
So I guess we gotta sit up here, but...
Well, put your right up front.
Try to speak loud enough for everyone to hear me. For those of you who don't know, this is Tom.
Thank you. So we'll turn it over to you, and you can...
Yes, Brian said my name's Tom. I've, I'm a kind of first agency. Probably not enough, or is that... So anyways, in July, the, the, actually, we were tasked with coming up with a park plan for the empty lot, which is located directly across the road there, see it up there as well. So over the next couple of months, we basically looked at some of the factors that would go involved in that, what, what could possibly go on there, the different amenities and features that would possibly fit into the bathroom space. So we had discussed a number of the stakeholders, I guess, you know, Brian, for example, Imperial Oil, who's the actual owners of the lot, and we recently just did a community survey. So we started off... From our perspective anyways, our project was, was to develop this into a room space. So for us, you know, our vision was to use creative park elements to enhance the restroom connectivity that was in the area, because improving walkability as a park feature is important, as well as the aesthetic value of it, which really can help the downtown core in general, downtown population, for example. So we had a number of objectives that came along with this, improving the aesthetics of the town. We want to be complimentary to the town office property, which is very close to the street. We wanted to continue the pathway for pedestrians, and we also wanted to separate the lot from the surrounding uses, residential use to the west, and also residential uses to the south of it. And we want to accommodate it with oil, because without their heart's in okay on it, we can't even move forward with it. So what is existing on the lot? If you don't know, it was previously a gas station. Due to this, there is some soil contamination on the lot. It's located at the corner of two highways, so it's a very busy intersection. That has its own type of contamination that comes along with it. Imperial Oil provided us with information on the site, so there's fourteen boreholes still there, and there's fourteen monitoring wells on the site that we had to come for. Approximately forty-six percent of the lot is still hated from the previous gas station. There's two curts on the north end and the east side of the property. There's current instrument blocks out there that block traffic, and the surrounding uses, residential lots in the west that I mentioned, commercial uses to the south. There's a Max convenience store across the highway to the east, and a town office across the highway to the right. So what we tried to do is, we tried to first identify where our constraints and where our opportunities. So the constraints we had, first we have to deal with, there's two highways here. Creates an option that we choose to be up to consider. Surrounding uses, you know, their impact will be on residential dwelling next door, as well as commercial buildings around it. Also, there's Imperial Oil, as I mentioned, there are twelve monitoring wells, which they've meant, or they've communicated to us that they will need access to at some point. So there's a number of different factors that kind of come involved with that. So with our discussions with Imperial Oil, we've, we've talked to them. They want us to limit permanent structures on there. They're not totally against that, but we have to be taking into consideration where we are, and the fact that they as well, they will have to gain access to at some point. Same goes with the location of trees as well, we have to consider this as well, the wells as well. And then we, I'll get into a little more of the topics here, but containing the soil is the other issue that I mentioned before. So this, it kind of... So this, it kind of limits your own work of trees and gardens are the types of trees and gardens and how you're gonna locate them. Ideally, you're not gonna put a garden growing out of the soil, but we've, I'll bring up this, how we kind of works around that as well. There are types of trees that can be planted in there and that can be successful. So that's not as big an issue, we just have to watch where they're located because of the wells, again. Another mention, I'm gonna focus also on the opportunities here. First one, Imperial has mentioned they are willing to remove the paved surfaces and to add a topsoil and potentially solid over top of it. So going forward, that is a huge benefit. Some of the other opportunities, it's a prime location, this is right downtown. Very, you know, it's a popular intersection, you have a lot of traffic going through there. There's a lot of eyes on the location. So typically, you know, for example, crime prevention through, yeah, environmental design and stuff. But anyways, the, the idea of that is to have eyes on it, it's beneficial to develop anything that's longer for your public use. Proximity to the commercial uses, it's actually, while it's a restraint or a constraint, it's also an opportunity. You have a place where you can provide seating for those uses. You're providing potentially, you know, if you want to be able to parking, there's parking for those spaces. And users of the park have amenities nearby. Community involvement, one of the initial things we had discussed was there was a community garden group in town. Whether a community garden is the faction we go with, yet to be determined, but that's a potential opportunity for us. Improving the existing pedestrian route. If you, I've spent a little bit of time up there, but I've noticed people walking through the lot. You know, they're cutting through that area, you know, avoiding that intersection. Not a bad thing to remove people from that intersection. And instead of limiting that, we could, you know, enhance that, whether that's to improve lighting, pathways, you know, special use accessibility, we can improve that area. And as well as economic benefits, same type of downtown revitalization is good for the community. Whether you're improving traffic, you're improving property values, you're improving your sense of community in the space, getting people out, wanting to be, you know, in that area. You're, it has proven to have economic benefits. So it's always a positive to improve your areas such as that. From this, unfortunately it's hard to kind of see the legend there. We developed opportunities in the trades map. Little dots you'll see around there are boreholes, monitoring wells. Some are previously destroyed monitoring wells that are labeled on there. As you can see, they're scattered throughout. The gray area there is the existing pavements that's located on there. The purple outline there that is our, you know, our road space, that's where we're fronting onto. The yellow is the curts. The blue dots, those are existing sidewalks. So there is a, a strong pedestrian network already available. So any kind of design, we really wanted to, you know, not take away from that, we wanted to improve that. The yellow dot is the existing alley that was there as well. So what was our, what was our plan? So these are going back to our objectives that we had there. So improving the aesthetics, complementary to the town. So just kind of going through those a little more details here. So improve the aesthetics, we wanted to have a place that, you know, people would utilize, respect, you know, traditionally appealing, safe, you know, we didn't want this to be just another vacant lot. So something that people will like to use. But also, you know, keep it simple. It doesn't have to be extravagant to be something effective. Using natural features such as trees can have greater benefits than necessarily a wall or something like that or a fence. We wanted to be complementary to the town office across the street. It's a, it's a why not situation. You have a great green space out from the office here, why not take advantage of that? And not have it connected in some sense. Whether it's utilizing the entranceway and having, you know, counter entranceway to the park on the opposite side. Also utilizing the viewpoints as well from your side. So the next one was to improve the pedestrian pathway. So again, just not obstructing that natural shortcut that's there. Utilizing that as a benefit and creating a safe pathway for all people that are using. So whether it's wheelchair accessibility, improving lighting for people at all times, can go along with it for sure. Separating the use from the existing uses. As I mentioned, the residential use, that's a particular issue. Anytime you create an area where you have a public space, a residential use is gonna be the number one thing affected by it. Those people are gonna be out their backyard, they're gonna be using that space. Having a bunch of people in the neighboring lot, for any kind of use, you know, it's, it's gonna affect them. So we took that into consideration. The same thing with the motel on the other side, you know. The back of the motel, it doesn't have the most aesthetic appearance from the highway. It's the giant white wall. From my understanding, they're not open to the Giants' mural or anything like that. So, you know, working around that and trying to improve the general aesthetic of that is the goal there. The next is to accommodate the needs, again, of Imperial Oil. Trying to develop a good faith, you know, if we can do something that works for them, maybe they can help the town out in that sense as well. And that's, you know, keeping in mind the locations of the wells and keeping in mind that any permanent structures potentially would have to be moved for any work that they might have to do. And also, by developing, by keeping those in mind, any work they would have to do, we can mitigate, you know, how much that would affect it, you know. If it's a small area that they have to dig up, you know, by putting a tree there, that would make a big process to remove it. You know, we leave that as an open space, it might, you know, it's not as difficult to access it at that point. Other considerations, we definitely wanted to engage the community on this. We went through, we had a good survey. Lot of results came through, we had a higher eighty-two people into the survey, which is fantastic. We did a community survey for the municipal development plan last year, the year before. We had about eighty, I think, seventy-five responses for that, so excellent turnout for that. The Septide principles as well, Alberta transportation due to the proximity of the two highways. You know, the end of the day, they're gonna have a say on anything that goes in there, even pathways. And then the environment, you know, you have to consider what is feasible here, you know, there's, if you look across there now, it's covered in snow, that's the reality of where we are right. So probably getting to the actual designs, I just wanted to review a little bit of the actual survey results. Now, we ended up, they're actually the last appendix of the report that we came up with. So it's just moving back there. Some of the key things that we got, I would have referred, I said we had a hundred and eighty-five people answer it. I believe it was sixty-one percent were from the town of Icaria. There was a number of people from the tiny, big lakes that answered. So it shows that, you know, there's a lot of people in the whole surrounding area that have interest in that, that location. And it's a central location, so it's expected. But we had overwhelming feedback in a number of categories. The first one, in a positive sense, is what people want to see there, which is an aesthetic improvement. Large trees, it's the number one feature, hands down, people want to see there, some kind of landscaping. Forty-three percent identified as the number one elements. Featured large trees, just hands down the highest rating. Benches, open grass space, some kind of garden, picnic tables. These all received probably part of the most responses. There was however concern on a number of things as well, which are identified on the last page of it. The first is the ownership. Many people were wondering why the town would develop a lot, they don't know. That's a big thing, a lot of people were maybe just unaware of, you know, any of the negotiations going on with Imperial. What is potentially gonna happen there? There is definitely some concern there. Because people, and all that, it goes down, the other thing is, you know, people aren't spending the money on it. So I think that's a major consideration, that is thing that goes into development that I mind. That the community is aware that it is an Imperial Oil lot and that they are not necessarily wanting to develop something that the town might not have full control over. So I, I think that's an important issue going forward, for sure. But as I said, the, even more so, it was, you know, let's improve the aesthetics of the area. It's, it's a vacant lot, we can definitely improve it. So I, I know there's lots of reading there, so I don't wanna have you going through the reading at all right now. But what I've done is, we, we've come up with the four designs. In-house, we started off with about eight. We've kind of narrowed it down based on, well, the ones we thought were kind of the most wide range. The four designs, they don't all include the same things, they're quite different. The goal here isn't exactly to say, let's pick this one over this one. The, the idea here is, let's look at all four and see which elements that are involved in one of them fits best. So that when we do for our next concept, you know, it's, we're all gonna be looking on those there. So the first concept, I'll practice, I do wanna, I do wanna look at this real quick. When we're determining the, the concepts, we looked at key elements of the lot that we wanted to identify. So the first were the entrances. There's three entrances we really kind of went with with the concept. A fourth would be the final corner lot. These three locations here, the, the one in the top left corner, that is the entranceway. That's kind of the natural entranceway that people will even be in. It kind of extends down to the south, the east corner in that entranceway. That's the natural path that we're going through there. The other entryway up north, that's the, the one counter to the town office one. The next element was the buffering areas. So the one on the west, that is buffering the residential dwelling there. And the buffer zone on the south end, that's the one from the commercial, the existing motel in the restaurant there. So again, there's a number of different ways we went. Preferably, you know, longer term buffers, the ones that will work best are trees, they tend to be, especially for park elements. I'll, I guess, we'll get into more of the types of trees, you know, further design. Generally with this one, we're thinking a lot, along the west side, you know, pine trees are the ideal trees that you want there. They provide the greatest buffer visually as well as physically that, you know, they absorb the most basically there. And they provide the best barrier. Whereas on the south end of the lot, you might wanna go with a different type of tree, insidious, some kind of poplar tree. For a number of reasons, one, you know, it provides people a lot of walk-through, their access to the laneway. It also allows for eyes on between or beyond the parkings that laneway. While also being taller and hopefully blocking one of that motel back wall there. Another option we did include in one of the designs is an art wall, something that we worked on in town, for sure. Art wall, you know, simple panel board, actually the art result of like grade school class. It's went over really well, I do have a picture later here, slides, they'll show. So that, and that's another option, you know, it's, it's gonna be up there a lot faster than the tree will grow. The next is the corner space. The corner space idea is definitely still in development, simply because we need input on exactly how we wanna incorporate it for, whether we're gonna expand it or we're going to block it off in a sense. It's a potential entrance location as well for a pathway. It's potential seating area for people in the corner. Or, you know, they might also wanna be blocked off and keep that part separated and keep the park more enclosed. The final area is obviously the interior of the park. And what's gonna go in here, this is the one that's, this is really the most open, you know, whether you're putting in a playground, that has a number of issues, whether you're putting in a gazebo, town center square kind of idea, or you're just keeping it open. Number of ideas that people will be there. So these park elements, again, you know, types of entryways, there's, there's some fancier ones on here. You know, there's also less fancy ones, the bottom left one there. Potentially you don't need this exactly, you know, if you have a pathway without little pillars or anything. These are, again, sample ideas that the town can consider in the, in the final plans and, you know, bludgeoning is really the issue here. And then of course, there's the, the town entryway there too, which, you know, it could be mirrored on the other side. The buffering areas, again, is, is along the, the outside edges. So the top one there, the box around it, that's the idea of a tree sample. Trees are a great buffer for uses that you don't wanna have conflicting with your lot. And the little art wall along the bottom there, that's the wall of Peter River, it's right in the downtown. So far it's proved, you know, it's been a good addition, hasn't been vandalized, you know, the government level was a concern on that. It's been effective and it's, you know, it's blocked off a vacant lot. And potentially, you know, we didn't include this in an actual concept, but it is a potential quick fix solution for the other boundaries, you know, if the park doesn't go ahead, you know, in the exterior fence, that's, it is a, it's kind of like a secondary option, you know, if I'll back. The corner space, again, there's a number of issues that can go in here. The top right picture there, you know, that's kind of done entryway, as well as seating. Top left one, that one kind of locks off the park area. It allows for cut around, you know, space in a garden. And then the, the bottom one there, again, it allows seating, it's a little bit of expanded, but it generally separates it from the uses behind it. Next, the park elements. This one is, you know, the most wide open, you know, depending on what you wanna put in there, but these are just some ideas. So this is the first concept. The first concept we went with focused on the community garden space, because this was our initial, this is what we're, this is what kind of pushed it, the community garden idea. So we included a number of community garden spaces in that. For those of you, if you don't know what community garden is, it's a garden space that people can rent out. You know, they rent out the little lot, you grow their lawn in there. Not to be confused with an actual garden ground, if you're typically on raised, separated platforms that would have its own topsoil in there, so there's no risk that the containers will blow it. Included a garden shed, that's an optional one. This one is keeping the general path and this one did not have a path mimicking the town office entryway. It did include garden spaces, corner lot, these are both for buffering and for separating the use. As well as, you know, it's a beautification element for the corner. That's right at the busy corner, it's a beautification element for the town. A shade tree, as well as using trees to, in the buffer zones there. And then a number of benches spaced out between them. The next one here, this is our second one. Pretty bit different, you'll notice the gazebo in the top right corner. The idea of the location, this one here, is again, to keep eyes on it. We wanted to keep it away from the back of the lot. We wanted to keep it very visible from the road. Allows for enforcement, you know, the training, you know, nothing is going on there, there shouldn't be going on there. We want to include an option, parking space, to show you what that may look like there. And that's utilizing the existing curt. Could provide also parking for the, the nearby commercial lot there. This one also has the art wall on there. And then the largest shade tree. This one does have an entryway that complements the town office one. With some brick, a short brick wall on the other side, again, an entry feature, and then a park sign as well. Uh, and then a park sign as well, uh, near the top there, and a garden space. The next one, this is our, I guess, more of our wishful thinking one. Uh, this one includes the playground idea. Uh, I've only recently heard that from a bridge expectation regarding this one. So this one would need slight modification to include, to include a fence around the entire lot. So it's, again, it's been more of a scrub into design. Um, they would require a fence around the whole lot. Um, again, this one features a few different elements, uh, picking tables throughout. Uh, a short brick wall lining most of the exterior of the lot. Um, uh, park element feature, the sun dial in the middle, you know, that could easily be subbed out for something else such as a, a fountain, just as the gazebo could in the previous one. Um, you know, for a, a town square or something like that, that's, it's really, those are very interchangeable objects. Um, and then finally, and this last one is gonna seem almost bare compared to the, the others, but this is the one mostly based on the feedback from the survey, which is a very open concept. You know, with perhaps a few more trees, uh, spaced throughout. But in general, you know, we kept it open drafts featured, uh, the buffers are still there. Uh, we wanted to keep entryway features there. Um, but in general, this is your low-cost, simple, but also effective switch from what's currently there. But again, this is, you know, the symbol of a law. So moving forward, what I hope to gain, uh, is from your opinion, is, you know, which direction we should go for the, move forward with another concept? Um, should we go, you know, with a gazebo type feature? Um, should we look for, you know, uh, the playground and try to explore that further? Should we explore the open concept? Um, this is kind of the feedback right now. We've seen what can go onto the park and how it could fit. Moving forward with your, um, direction, we can refine this design, we can start with the pink line elements. Um, one of the things, if you haven't noticed, there is no laying placed on there yet. Again, that will come with the final designs, uh, in the late night as well. I just, I kind of wanna steer away from that because we intend to have it in there either way in the designs. Yeah, so. I was about to say.
If I can just start, I know we're supposed to go at fifteen minutes, so if we want to, uh, keep going, we can. Or do we want to put this on an agenda item on one of our next ones? Cause I, I know our council will, will all have ideas and it will probably take us, uh, a good half hour to, to debate, to get you down to what you're sort of looking for, I think. And, uh, I don't know if we have the time today, but we can take it if we want. Or, or can we get back to you in two weeks, put it on our next agenda and, and get back to you then?
Yep, uh, it's off hundred percent okay. I knew that we'd be presenting a lot of information today. Um, and this is, yeah, this is definitely the time where, you know, the feedback is more crucial because you guys are gonna have the push for this and we don't want you to do anything that you won't be able to develop.
Yeah, well, there was lots of great ideas and concepts there. That was wonderful, lots of ideas to, to look at.
So, uh, if that's the easiest path, then you guys can have more time on it. Um, if you wanna carry my ideas apart when I'm not here, that's definitely okay.
Go ahead.
Just, just one, uh, quick question, either Vern or you could answer it. Uh, I was looking at all the, the bore holes and the, and the monitoring wells and how some of them actually go into our street.
Yep.
Um, how often are they done? Like,
How often do they?
How often, no, how often do they move them? Because obviously there's some decommissioned, some commissioned. And, and my concern is that if we start something, are they suddenly gonna say, okay, we need a bore hole over here now? And, and so how long do they keep these in place? Anybody know? So the-
I'd have to say I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one. Um, I could definitely follow up with Imperial on that. We'll continue monitoring, taking those sites clean.
No, but I mean, I'm talking about the way to choose them, because they decommissioned some. So obviously they said at one point, these are no longer good, just put some new ones in. Now they've got existing ones. And when will they stop and then add big new ones? And, you know, it's, I, I, I don't really want to go into something that, if it's something gonna be moved because of bore holes. So I'm not sure how that bore hole stuff works and, and monitoring stations, so.
Yep, that's, um, definitely a question I can follow up with Imperial on. Um, my understanding from my discussions with them was that I didn't know that they'd be moving them, so that the ones that are existing, they needed access to in the future. So it's based our designs around them.
For how long?
Yeah, and they, and they didn't indicate that they would be moving them, but I guess, that's a fair question, because I didn't ask if they would be moving them.
I would say the monitoring wells would not be moved.
Yeah.
Because we've got monitoring wells at our old handful site and basically there was four drilled in that area and they've been back testing them because they, they test them every year, so.
Yeah.
For allegiance, so.
Also, follow up, I guess, and to confirm for sure. I love the amount of feedback that's definitely public.
Yes. So in your package here, does it say exactly what Imperial is willing to do with that lot?
Uh, it doesn't go in the briefcase, so, uh, trying to keep their, uh, conversations, I guess, limited to until we, you know, for sure. Um, just because, you know, uh, you're public document, I didn't want to put them into a corner. Um, from my understanding what they said is to keep permit, uh, structures to a minimum. Um, and to not move the top of, of them.
No, what are they willing to do? What are they willing to do with that lot?
Uh, they can say they were open to removing the concrete and, um, to capping it and putting, uh, a couple of topsoil and then grass over top. And that's as far as we got out of them.
I have the hitman here.
It's up to the town to finish what's left.
I know that, uh, my discussions with Chad Grummet, um, they've all, for the most part, been very positive. A lot of the things that were proposed for this site, historically, there were, it's historically Esso doesn't do this. Um, the length of the lease, looking at a ten-year lease for us, um, to allow us to maximize the park space that we do create out of that. And then giving us ten years to negotiate with them, the ownership and transfer the ownership to the town. So there, there's all sorts of things that we have, um, from Esso that, that seem really positive and, and historically, things that they haven't done before, but they haven't really been approached before in this way. This has been an ongoing project. Uh, Michael Smith started this years ago and even when Diane Oliver was, was mayor, there was plans and, and discussions put forward on this. So it's, it's been fifteen years in the making and hopefully we can, we can get it done and, uh, and benefit the town. But there's lots of discussions with Esso that still have to be taken place. We have to put forward a motion. And, and then that motion, once we've adopted whatever it is that we want, goes to Esso and then they go, oh, you want this? And, and we'll probably have to discuss a little bit more with them, but I'm sure they're eager and they want to make this work, so. We'll hit 'em hard.
All right, any other questions over here? Well, thank you both for coming down and doing the presentation. That gives us, uh, lots to, to think about and to chew on. And the report will give us some more reading material and we'll, we'll put that on our next agenda, Brian, and then we'll have, we'll be able to get back to you after we take some time in the next agenda for it.
Okay, and, uh, follow me on the essay anytime, you know, if you need a question, call with a question, uh, feel free. Uh, always available, so, um, happy to answer any questions further.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
You can make a reminder about the, uh, scholarship.
Yeah, our, uh, Robert E. Wallfirth Scholarship is currently accepting applications, I'm sure.
March thirty-first.
Thank you in the back, we're all fired. Yes, so as much of the artwork, uh, my moral lines.
All right, so we'll move on to our Minister Snow, the public delegation. Chris, you have anything to, to bring forward?
Today? You're the public here today.
Just to show I suggested when the delegation's coming, have him introduce himself, all the names first, last names.
Okay.
I didn't remember who that teacher got last name. I never did catch her last name, because even if she had a law. Okay, so it should be empty, that's all, even for the public, I'm just doing that.
All right. Okay, moving on to our next item, which is the public works report. Can I get a motion on this one? Uh, Councilor Danaca?
I make a motion that council receives the February twenty eighteen public work, works report as presented for information.
Vern, do you have anything, do you want to highlight for us?
Uh, nothing to, uh, other than the annual reports went out today, uh, for lagoon operation and water system operation. Um, it's pretty much been a snow removal month of February. Not much else is there, other than steady as she goes.
All right, I'll throw it open to questions from anybody on this. Go ahead, Councilor Long.
How are we at for snow removal on a budget? Blowing it out of the water or?
Yeah, it's been split between two years, right? So i- it's not too bad. Uh, like I've always said, the, the guys are being paid anyway. It's fuel and maintenance on machines what, what actually tallies up your snow removal, uh, dollars, because they would be working anyway.
Doing a great job anyways.
Uh, we haven't hired any private contractors to haul snow or anything like that. Uh, we did hire a private contractor to push up the stove dumping site, uh, cause it was full, but it's been just our own forces.
Okay, I, I was curious, Vern, what sidewalk machines, you demoed sidewalk machines, what is that?
Yes, we did. It was part of our, uh, equipment replacement plan this year. Uh, we had three different, uh, units come in. Uh, the last one was just here on Monday. We did do an RFP. Uh, we didn't do a tender, uh, just simply because we can negotiate with them, it's like buying a car. Um, you don't always get your best price if you tender it. So on this particular instance, we did do an RFP and we're gonna enter into negotiations with the, the same type of machine. It's the same manufacturer as we already have. And, uh, that makes our existing attachments that are not wore out compatible with the machine. So it will save us money that way.
Okay, I was also curious about, uh, how the clarifiers and the refurbishing of them is going. Like I said, what is done?
That number one is done, our number two is done. Uh, it's filled and producing good quality water now, so it will be being, uh, the main one. And number one is actually being started to be drained. And they're looking to be back on site next week to do that and complete that project.
All right. Councilor Gilroy?
Um, probably two quick things. One is, uh, are there any projects that we should be aware of that are going to be happening soon, that, uh, we may not know about yet?
Uh, the, the Evergreen Reservoir contracts have been signed. Uh, that is waiting on the finishing of the clarifier before that pro- project can go ahead. But with the contract signed, they can order the pumps and, uh, other materials that they need. It's a commitment now that we've signed them.
And, uh, secondly, we had talked last, uh, meeting about the possibility of a potential use for the, for the, um, old pump station, is it? It's right by the theater thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you have an idea what process we need to go in to help you? To give us a quote on what it would take to put it into, uh, that potential use that we're looking at of?
Uh, first of all, we have to determine the use for it. Uh, if it's gonna be broadband or if it's gonna be a pump station and then, then upon our, our both. Then upon that, we can, we can enter into, uh, finding out some prices on what it's gonna cost.
All right, any other questions for him? No? Hearing none, then we'll... Yeah, I think you're safe, Vern, yeah. Well, uh, a vote to accept for information, all in favor? Carrie? Yeah, yeah, you're in time. Moving on to our minutes from the February thirteenth, which is actually a, a regular council meeting, which is on the front, um. Can I get a motion for this one? Why, Councilor Stanhouse?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that council approve the minutes from the February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting of council as presented.
All right, any changes and omission errors that anybody has spot, spotted? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? Moving on to the High Prairie Golf Course, uh, Letter of Comfort, can I get a motion on that? Councilor Danaca?
I just wanna bring to the council's attention that option one is that council give first reading to bylaw zero five twenty eighteen line of credit, loan guarantee. I'm assuming it should say letter of comfort, because the next motion is the loan guarantee.
Yeah, and there was, uh, I, I know in the emails, we got the, the clarification on that. And I thought there was going to be a, a, the amendment here tonight or the change for that, but not here.
It was the same motion as last year's.
But they're both for the same thing.
No, they're not.
According to this, zero five twenty eighteen line of credit, loan guarantee. And then zero six twenty eighteen line of credit, loan guarantee.
One's for sixty thousand dollars for your line of credit and the other one is for their loan of forty-five thousand.
Okay, but our agenda says the letter of comfort, so is it a letter of comfort or is it a loan guarantee?
The sixty thousand is a letter of comfort.
Okay. So the first motion is for a letter of comfort, the second motion is for the loan guarantee.
That's the way I understand it.
How it's been for years. That's how it was for years for this one.
Zero five twenty eighteen is the letter of comfort.
Yes.
Okay.
So are you going to make a motion with, and then we'll, because we haven't got a motion yet, but you wanna take out, if I'm understanding you right, that council will give first reading to bylaw zero five twenty eighteen, letter of comfort for the High Prairie District Club this twenty-seventh day, is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Cause I'm going by what the agenda says.
Yes.
So I make a motion that council give
first reading to bylaw zero five twenty eighteen, letter of comfort for the High Prairie District Golf Club this twenty-seventh day of February twenty eighteen.
Councilor Gilroy?
Does that, does a change of what was, um, just made, does that change the bylaw wording?
wording? Just a quick question on that.
Because you changed the name of the, the bylaw, or have you? Looks like you have.
Oh, sorry, I was... Go ahead.
Just to advise you, uh, if you changed the, uh, name, as in number one, it's cited as, you can still do that for the, after the first reading for the next reading, because you're not doing all three readings tonight, so you can make any changes you want still.
And again, this, if I, just to make sure, this is just so that they have some operating cash to get started, right? That's the intent of it, yeah. And we've been doing this for many years and it's never been an issue, so...
Okay. And this?
Go ahead.
Uh, I guess to Nancy, this is worded basically word for word from what we do every year, correct? So, so yeah, semantics. So we get those straightened out, as long as we're not changing the intent of what we've been doing for them for the past forty-nine years.
And all this going in the states can be checked and changed at the same time?
Yeah.
I didn't say that.
I just wanted to make sure that we're saying the same thing here.
So, all right.
All right, so any other questions about this motion? Or prepared to vote? All right, all those in favor? Carrie? Moving on to High Prairie Golf Club Loan Guarantee. And motion on that one? Go ahead, Counselor Long.
That council give first reading to bylaw zero six two dash two zero one eight line of credit loan guarantee for the High Prairie District Golf Club this twenty-seventh day of February twenty eighteen.
All right. Any questions on this? Oh, okay. That's the one that was changed out, okay. So what was changed out on it again, Brian? Just, oh, okay. Well, that looks to be the exact same wording on the option that, uh, was picked, so, yeah. Just a question, should we be putting the amount in the motion or keeping that out? Keeping it out?
It's in bylaws, I suppose.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, uh, any other questions on this? None? All those in favor? Carrie? Moving on to our financial report. Can I get a motion on this one? I'll make the motion that council received the financial report for January twenty eighteen as presented for information. And we'll, uh, turn it over and see if Terry's got anything she'd like to highlight for us?
Um, because it's the January one, same as last year, there's almost no information because we don't have a budget to compare it to yet, so I can't do the, uh, the analysis or anything. Um, the numbers, of course, aren't all in because it's the first month of the year, so it's one of those ones where it's mandatory for me to present it to council, but there's non-information basically. Unless council has some questions.
Any questions? No questions on this? All right, all those in favor of receiving for information? Carrie? Uh, we have the High Prairie Interagency Request. Counselor Long?
That council approved the High Prairie App Original Interagency Request for two thousand dollars for the fourth annual traditional powwow.
Counselor Gilroy?
Looking at the previous motion the Council on made last year, it said it was to take, be taken from the FCSs account. If that's still valid, can you add that to your, uh, motion, please? Or consider?
Absolutely. My first question though is, why was that part changed from the FCSs account? Do we have? Terry?
Terry, Brian, do you know?
I'd have to look into it further, but, um, the powwow itself, we cannot put under FCSs, cause it's not preventative in nature. And FCSs is mandatory, it is preventative. So I have to look into what they're exactly, they're gonna be doing there to make it a little bit more, like if it's entertainment, it's, or sports, it doesn't qualify. So... But again, it's not, um, preventative. So there's some guidelines. I'd have to look through the regulations from FCSs and see if it fits in there. I know that we had that, uh, meeting last year, Brian and I, with the people from FCSs and there were some things that they had changed. I don't know if this is one of the ones that will qualify or not. I'd have to look further.
So do you have a line item that we should be looking at or?
Any suggestions, Terry? Are you not sure what?
I have no idea. It did qualify last year. But like I said, we did a few things last year that they let us get away with that, cause we, they hadn't had a chance to go through things with us more. I can try putting it through there again. If they let it go through last year, they may let it go through again this year, but the, don't forget that the FCSs annual report isn't due till next month. And so even though we put it in twenty seventeen, by the time we submit it, they could still turn that down from last year.
And then we can look at, my line item, where we can draw that from? So if I, um, as Counselor Gilroy requested, if we can put that in, uh, to be taken from the FCSs account and direct to entries to the check table two, High Prairie App Original entries. And then if we need to change the FCSs account, then we can, in our back account.
Or you could automatically just have us put it into the council, uh, seven seventy account for grants to other organizations if it does not fit under FCSs. Then it would not have to come back to council. It would be a this one or that one, second choice.
Counselor Stenhouse?
Um, so, if you look at page twenty-eight, so you made a motion for two thousand dollars, but we're already giving twenty-five hundred dollars in in-kind donation. And on page twenty-nine, we have High Prairie Sports Palace refundable po- deposit of twenty-five hundred dollars. So if we're giving two thousand dollars in cash plus twenty-five hundred in in-kind, we're totaling... Yeah, we're totaling forty-five hundred dollars to this event.
Actually fifty-five hundred if you count rec board, then because underneath it's a show board.
Not until it's ours.
It's five hundred dollars for twenty-one year.
Yeah.
The money that brings into the town and it's four years, getting bigger and bigger. Very first powwow on powwow trail. So it's, uh, it's a big event.
It's a, yeah, and it's a big donation, too. It's, it's a big donation that we're giving to an event that probably doesn't fall under FCSs as a...
I'm not really all that concerned if it falls under FCSs. I look at it from a, from a community building point of view and in a neighbor building point of view. And this is, this has turned out to be with the work of Ken Uman, it's just turned out to be a phenomenal annual event, um, that town looks forward to and our First Nations neighbors and people who live in town look forward to. It's money well spent.
We have other events coming to town that we need to sponsor, too. I'm just saying we don't, I don't think we should put all our eggs in one basket. And we are giving a huge amount to one event.
Counselor Gilroy?
Uh, I think I probably need to clarify why I said FCSs. Uh, we are continually looking for FCSs events and if we can hear the money through FCSs, it's all the better to match our, the commitment we have to make to FCSs. I'm not saying I don't wanna support the event. I was there the entire time last time. Um, and yes, it's a large amount, but once again, if you look at how much, in a sense, we spend a lot for the rodeo and we gave even more money for the rodeo this year. Events that we consider to be things that will benefit the entire community, um, all the small businesses in town, things like that. Um, is, it's one of those things where, uh, I'm sure we could probably spend money in other places that will not have as much of a impact. Uh, and so, a- as I said, I just wanted to, if we can move to FCSs, great. If not, still support it.
Counselor Danaka?
Um, I concur with Counselor Long. Um, th- this event has blossomed from the very first year. And it just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Stenhouse, in terms of looking at what we're giving in in-kind and what we're giving monetarily. But I don't necessarily look as the two together, because these are events that are happening in town and it's just something that, it's almost like a goodwill that the town does for these events to help these organizations with in-kind, things that we can do. But with this event in terms of the monetary donation, it is far, far beyond being well-spent.
You have to come with us, cause it's a blast. So you want to get, you know, you love it.
I just have a question, is what's the in-kind for? Is that the advertising and promotion? Are we doing other stuff specifically for it? Well, I'm, I'm looking on here, there's twenty-five hundred dollars for Sports Palace rental. It's the deposit? Is that the in-kind, that we're waiving the deposit?
No, because there's a seven seventy-one seventy-five seat where it comes for.
But, but the, I know that's the rec board is the twenty-five hundred, but for an outside user, that's the town of High Prairie, right? That might be what they're thinking? Right? Cause that's the only place where I'm, I'm wondering if we do anything else in kind for them.
Considering our population base, excuse the comments, I want where donated.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's, that's what I... Yes, that's what I'm thinking. Okay, your, your comment was about, uh...
Well, there's other figures here.
Yeah. Others are only giving out, uh, a thousand?
Yeah. And the population of town is, as of February eighth, two thousand seventeen, is twenty-five sixty-four and the county is in two thousand sixteen with five thousand six hundred and seventy-two. They're more than double. In their population base.
Okay, Counselor Gilroy?
Um, reading this over again, I was reminded of a, a couple concerns I had last year. And one was, yes, we had our flag in the, um, walk-through, but the only flag I saw up there for the entire time, and we talked about the Sesquicentennial flag and our town flag, but the only flag I saw flying in the arena during that event was the county's. And if we're going to support them for a large amount, I want our flag visible. I'm sorry, I, I want us to be branding here when we give money away. And last, I was disappointed last year when I only saw the county one up the entire time and they still didn't walk in with us. There was no Sesquicentennial, there was no town one, just the county one last year.
We'd give her a flag last year for the...
But they didn't put it up. That was my problem.
I'd give them a flag though.
Yeah, but we, I walked with it.
So we'll make sure that that happens.
Yes, that's all I wanna make sure we do. If we're gonna support these things as the town, that the townspeople know this is where their money's going to.
Yeah.
And we have a really nice, I noticed, uh, on the bench, or today, we've got sort of our donations for twenty eighteen. We've got, uh, thirteen thousand already committed, or actually, I guess it'd be fifteen, thirteen committed plus the fifteen hundred. So there's still eight thousand dollars roughly for, for that. So we are going to be, you know, this will be a big chunk out of that budget going forward. Out of the thirty thousand dollars, we'll have fifteen, uh, left. And we're into month two, but... That's the...
But this is, yes, we're, we're into month two, but they're planning, the community's planning into May now and into June and, and so these dollars are being allocated now, but they're being spread over the year. Works out to a dollar per person basically in town and it's, it's well worth it.
Okay, well, we've hashed it out. Is there any last bits here? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Going to the twenty eighteen budget?
She's breaking.
You're right, and we're into an hour and a half, so yes, we'll take a break.